Welcome to the City Council Meeting of March 6, 2017. I'm calling the meeting to order. Will the Clerk please call the roll?
Mayor Ford.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Bullock.
Here.
Councilman Amador.
Present.
Councilman Teeter.
Here.
Councilwoman Carson.
Present.
Councilman Diaz.
Here.
Councilman McElDowney.
Here.
Councilwoman Elliott.
Present.
Councilman Douglas.
Present.
Mr. Mayor, you have a quorum.
Thank you, and for the record, we'll let the record know that all are present this evening. I'd like to ask everybody to stand for a moment of silence, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please be seated. I'd like to ask the staff to pass the microphone around, allow the audience to introduce themselves.
Serenity.
Elizabeth.
Amber.
Nicole.
Marty Flom, Observer.
Carolyn Keith, Parks Recreation and Golf.
Michelle Halsted, City Manager's Office.
Dennis Moon, Police Department.
Kathy Blakeman, Human Resources.
Maria DeAndre, Public Works.
Barbara Aguilera, Public Works.
Armando Vergel, Finance.
Cheryl Carstens, Finance.
David Soucy, Applicant.
Jill Soucy.
Jim McTernan, Starbuds.
Alrighty, thank you all for being here today. We'll get right into our agenda. We start with Proclamations and Recognitions. I'd like to invite Finance Director Cheryl Carston forward to accept a Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting on behalf of the city. This is the 29th year of receiving this award from the Government Finances Officers Association. I'd like to, you're already up there, gosh, you guys are quick. I'd like to invite the council to come down for a photo, but first, I'd like to say, what an outstanding job. I know 29 years in a row. I don't think that that cheapens this award in any way, shape, or form, and it's very important that we're transparent and that our residents know that we have some of the best financing within our city that we can have. And you two are a big part of that with your team in that department. I know I just went up and signed some documents to help save, Cheryl, help me, $3.2 million? Because you guys are always on top of what the markets are and what we need to do to, how to shift our money around and make sure we're getting the best interest off of it. Therefore, that money goes back into the community to help create improvements that otherwise we would have to find other funding sources for if we weren't diligent, if you weren't diligent with how the money is handled within the city. So, thank you from me and this council very much for all the hard work you do. I'd like to come down and present you with this Certificate of Achievement. And before we go down and take a picture and do that, I'd like to open it up for any council members if they have any comments they'd like to make this time, and then I would give you the floor for any comments you'd like to make. So, council, anybody?
Just great job.
Just great job. Anytime you say those $3 million, great job.
We appreciate that.
Cheryl, do you guys have anything you'd like to add?
Well, I certainly just want to say thanks, and while we gladly accept this, on behalf of the city, we certainly want to recognize our staff and all the work that they put in. This isn't just a demonstration of the work that Armando and I do, so I want to make sure they receive that credit that's due to them as well.
Absolutely. I know it's a team, but you guys are the leader of that team. So, we appreciate everybody in Finance, and the direction all comes from you. That's why you're up here getting the award. Alright, if everybody will join me down front, please. Okay, next item on the agenda. I'd like to invite the members of Girl Scout Troop 64393 forward to the podium. I have a proclamation that we need to consider tonight, and I'd ask the city attorney to read the proclamation.
Thank you, Mayor Ford. Proclamation: Whereas Juliette Daisy Gordon Low founded the Girl Scouts of the USA on March 12, 1912, whereas 100 years ago in 1917, the first Girl Scout Council west of the Mississippi was formed in Colorado Springs known as the Wagon Wheel Council. And whereas in Girl Scouts, girls develop their leadership potential through activities that enable them to discover their values, skills, and the world around them, as well as connect with others in a multicultural environment. And whereas Girl Scouts continues to create gender-balanced leadership by providing girls with the tools to become leaders dedicated to making this country a better place through financial literacy and empowerment, business planning and entrepreneurship, anti-bullying, and other development programs. And whereas through the dedication, time, and talent of 10,000 Colorado volunteers of different backgrounds, abilities, and areas of expertise, the Girl Scout program is brought to more than 20,000 girls in grades K through 12 across the state. And whereas in 2016 in Colorado, more than 1,600 Girl Scouts helped make the world a better place and earned one of Girl Scouts' highest honors, the Bronze, Silver, or Gold Award. Now therefore, be it resolved that the City Council of Commerce City does hereby applaud the commitment Girl Scouting has made to support the continued advancement of girls in their roles as leaders here in Commerce City, and declare March 12 through 18, 2017 to be Girl Scout Week.
Thank you very much. We have a proclamation before us. Is there a motion, Mr. Bullock?
Motion to accept the proclamation as read.
Mr. McElDowney?
Second.
I have a motion and a second to accept the proclamation as read. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion is carried, so we now have the Girl Scout Week. I'd like to start off by asking you young ladies to tell us your name for the record. I don't want your address because you're underage, so just tell us your name. And rank, is there a rank associated with where you're at in Girl Scouts?
So, we're all cadets. Our troop is full of cadets.
Elizabeth.
Elizabeth.
Amber.
And Amber. It's okay, you don't have to be nervous in here. We're all nervous, so it makes it easier to get along. Well, thank you very much for coming in this evening, and I did walk out and talk to you a little bit in the audience. I don't know if the cookies made it here or not. Awesome. So, this is my opportunity to help you by saying, anybody in the audience who are on this council wishes to purchase some Girl Scout cookies and help with the cause, it's very important because the City Council just declared the week of Girl Scout Week. So, we should be supportive, and I will be buying my, I think I committed to at least six boxes tonight, right? So, I'm going to be buying my six boxes. So, anybody that's here that would like some Girl Scout cookies, they will be here, the Girl Scouts will be here, and all I would ask is that as long as we're inside this room, that those sales happen very quietly, but I will guarantee you, I will buy some cookies from you this evening, and I would imagine some of my council representatives will as well. So, thanks again for coming in. I would like you to come up, we're going to come down and take a picture with you, and I'm going to give you that proclamation to take with you this evening. We can buy cookies now, Mr. Bullock? Are you hungry?
Thank you. Big smiles, one, two, three, and a few more. And there we go. Thank you.
Alright, cookies are coming in. We'll take a short break where the cookies get in.
I'm blind from the flashes. Them cookies?
Alright, next item on the agenda is Citizen Communication. Per council policy, Citizen Communication is the time on our agenda for the public to address the City Council on Business and Affairs of the City. The City Council is not able to hear any comments on land use matters that are before or may come before council. Please reserve such comments for the appropriate public hearing. When I call your name, please give your name and address for the record, and keep your comments limited to three minutes. Thank you. Alright, I have a couple of folks that signed up. We'll start with Peggy and Ron Blackwell. Are they here? Oh, that's alright. That's okay. That's fine, then we'll mark that one off, then we have one. Nicole is the other one. Okay, that's okay. We get that sometimes, but I am going to ask, is there anybody in the audience who didn't get a chance to sign up on the Citizen Communication form that would like to address the City Council on matters pertaining to the city? Seeing none, we're going to move forward in the agenda.
Here come the cookies.
Here come the cookies. We're going to take a quick, a quick break before we get into the rest of our agenda, and we're going to allow everybody to help these Girl Scouts out a little bit before we send them home with the proclamation. So, take a quick five minutes, and we'll be back in a moment.
Little cookies for you, Rick? Oh, that's right. It's nice to see everybody's cookie personality.
Approval of the minutes?
I'm good, I like having a working excuse.
Alrighty, looks like cookie sales went okay. Thanks again, Girl Scouts, for coming in tonight, and please contact And, uh, please contact the City of Commerce City to schedule a presentation of the colors and we'd love to have you back. Yep, thank you.
Thank you, how may I say?
Yep, you too. Alright, moving on in our agenda, we come to the approval of the minutes, we have February 13th. Um, I'm open for a motion and second to allow Councilmember McElhany to abstain from voting on the minutes of February 13th because of an excused absence. Uh, Mr. Bullock?
Move to, move to excuse Councilman McElhany.
Thank you, Mr. Teeter.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to allow for abstention of Mr. McElhany. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion is carried. Now, I'm open for a motion and a second to approve the minutes of February 13th, 2017. Mr. Douglas?
So moved.
Mr. Amador?
Second.
Have a motion and a second to approve the minutes of February 13th. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion is carried. Now, we'll come to the consent agenda. The consent agenda includes items that are routine, procedural, informational, self-explanatory, and non-controversial. They are presented to council for a single motion and vote. Any member of council may ask to remove a specific item for further discussion in a separate vote. Tonight, there are five items listed under the consent agenda. Does anyone on council wish to remove an item off of the consent agenda for further discussion? Saying none. I'm open for a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented. I'd like to ask, uh, for the motion first, Mr. McElhany?
Mr. Mayor, I'd move to approve the consent agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Bullock. Second. Have a motion and a second. Will the city attorney please read the titles of the consent agenda items?
Ordinance 2120, an ordinance amending section 21-9230 of the Commerce City Land Development Code relating to the annual escalation of water acquisition fees. Resolution 2017-04, approving an easement for the regional transportation district for access purposes. Resolution 2017-19, resolution approving grant of drainage easements to J. Foley Properties, LLC. Resolution 2017-29, resolution approving Greater Outdoors Colorado implementation grant agreement. Resolution 2017-31, resolution approving grant of access easement to Hazeltine Heights Water and Sanitation District.
Thank you. I have a motion and a second. Titles have been read, I'll ask for a roll call vote. For the record, the consent agenda has been approved this evening unanimously by the city council. Moving to resolutions. We start with resolution 2017-25. After approval of the resolution, the newly appointed judges will, um, come forward. Are they here tonight? I don't believe that, here's Ms. Juarez.
I was gonna say, we're early.
Alright, well, I, I don't want to, um, do their presentation until they have the opportunity to get here. I was looking forward to having the council meet them during the meeting. So, I would ask, uh, to allow, to amend the agenda to, um, go ahead and get into our ordinances and come back to resolutions once, uh, the judges do show up. Thank you, Mr. Juarez. Uh, is there a motion, Mr. Bullock?
So moved.
Mr. McElhany?
Second.
Alright, I'm motion and a second to amend the agenda, holding off on resolutions, moving into ordinances on first reading. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion is carried. We'll move on to ordinances. Ordinance 2122. Does anyone on council have any questions, um, for staff regarding this ordinance? Saying none? Is anyone in the audience who would like to come forward and address the council regarding this ordinance? Saying none? I'm open for a motion and a second to introduce ordinance 2122 by council as seated. Mr. McElhany?
Would move to approve, or introduce, rather, ordinance 2122, council as seated on first reading.
Thank you, Mr. Bullock. Second. Have a motion and a second. Mr. Attorney, please read the title of 2122.
Ordinance 2122, an ordinance amending section 21-4400, section one of the City of Commerce City Land Development Code by adopting the Federal Emergency Management Agency's recent and future updated flood insurance study and accompanying flood insurance rate maps.
Great, thank you. It's been moved and seconded, title's been read. Roll call vote. For the record, it's been, uh, 2122 has been introduced unanimously by council this evening. We'll move on to ordinance 2124. Anyone on council have any questions regarding this ordinance? Saying none? Is there anyone in the audience who would like to come forward and address the city council on this ordinance? Saying none? I'm open for a motion and a second to introduce ordinance 2124 by council as seated. Mr. Bullock?
Move to introduce ordinance 2124 on first reading, council as seated.
Mr. McElhany?
Second.
Have that motion and second. Will the city attorney please read the title for ordinance 2124?
Ordinance 2124, an ordinance amending the 2017 budget of the City of Commerce City, Colorado by transferring a portion of the undesignated retained earnings in the Information Technology Fund to the CIPP Fund in the amount of $174,200 for the Records Information Management Project and authorizing the expenditure thereof.
Thank you. I'm asking for a roll call vote. Mm-mm. Oh.
Top flash.
There you go. For the record, ordinance 2124 has been introduced unanimously by the city council this evening. Moving to ordinance on first reading, ordinance 2125. Is there anyone on council who has questions regarding this ordinance? Saying none? Is there anyone in the audience who would like to come forward and address the council on this ordinance? Saying no one? I'm open for a motion and a second. Mr. Amador?
Move to introduce ordinance 2125 as, as presented, council as seated.
Thank you, Mr. Teeter.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Introduction of ordinance 2125, will the city attorney please read the title?
Ordinance 2125, an ordinance amending the 2017 budget of the City of Commerce City, Colorado by appropriating a portion of the unencumbered fund balance of the water acquisition fund in the amount of $1,787,850 for the purchase of 4A water and authorizing the expenditure thereof.
Thank you. And ask for a roll call vote. For the record, ordinance 2125 is introduced unanimously by the city council this evening. Move on to ordinances on second reading. We have ordinance Z-939-17. Was introduced, uh, on first reading by a vote of seven to two after the public hearing on February 6th. Therefore, um, since it wasn't unanimous, we end up hearing it outside of the consent agenda for second reading. We need to ask city attorney for a proposed amendment to correct an oversight in the order, ordinance as drafted. Mr. Attorney?
Thank you, Mayor Ford. Upon reviewing the ordinance as approved on first reading, I understood there was not a designation of the specific zone districts that each parcel of this property would be assigned, um, by this ordinance as identified in the public hearing. So, as a housekeeping measure to correct that oversight, I provided council with a substitute Exhibit A and a proposed motion to incorporate that change.
Thank you. Is there a motion to allow for the substitution of that and that change? Mr. Bullock?
So moved.
Mr. McElhany?
Second.
Motion and second to allow for the amendment, uh, Exhibit A to correct, to, to correct and identify the zoning for the individual parcels. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion is carried. I'm gonna ask the city attorney to read the, oh, you already, we already got the text taken care of. Need a motion and a second to approve ordinance Z-939-17? Yes, sir?
May I make a, I would just like to read it for charter compliance, uh, just really briefly.
That's fine.
Thank you.
Now's the time.
Um, Exhibit A is being changed to add the following statement, um, after the legal description that said property also legally described and shown in the district subdivision plat approved by resolution number 2017-11, resolution approving subdivision plat in case number S-66817 of the city council of the City of Commerce City, February 6th, 2017, Lot 1, I-1 Zone District, Lot 2, C-3 Zone District.
Good, thank you. Now, I'm open for a motion. Mr. McElhany?
I would move to approve ordinance Z-939-17 on second reading.
Mr. Bullock?
Second.
Have a motion and a second, uh, to approve on second reading, ordinance Z-939-17. Will the city attorney please read the title?
Ordinance Z-939-17, an ordinance rezoning from I-2 to C-3 and I-1. The property described in Exhibit A attached here too and made apart hereof, located at 5850 Dahlia Street, Commerce City, Colorado, and amending the zoning map of the City of Commerce City, Colorado to reflect said rezoning.
Thank you. Have a motion and a second, we'll take a roll call vote. For the record, eight in favor, one opposed. Motion carries. Alright, got it. That takes us through all of our ordinances, so we are going to take a step back to our resolutions and, uh, take care of resolution 2017-25. Um, now, we know our newly appointed judges are here. I'd like to, uh, ask Judge Juarez to please come up and, uh, take care of the process of swearing everybody in.
Judge, first thing I introduce to you on the city council, this is Tammy Bauer. Uh, I've known Tammy since she was a prosecutor in Thornton and she was the relief judge for Judge Cohen in Northland, uh, before he retired from there. Uh, she's the person that I selected to be the associate judge, the primary person to back me up when I'm unavailable. Next to her is Melissa Beato. Melissa actually worked for me as an associate at my firm before. She also was a prosecutor in Thornton. Uh, she has tremendous amount of, they both have tremendous amount of courtroom experience. I think that they're both among the applicants that we got, the most qualified to serve as a capacity relief judge. Uh, because Tammy has, uh, practice as well, the chances of both of us being unavailable in the same week are higher than if I, I would've found somebody who was otherwise retired. Uh, and so, I thought it's appropriate to have a relief judge for both of us, just in case we're both unavailable or if there's a conflict of interest that we both have to excuse ourselves from. Tammy is actually a resident of Commerce City, uh, and Melissa lives near me out, uh, she lives in Westminster. Um, and any questions that anybody has with regard to the process or their selection, we're here to answer them.
Oh, I would just say, welcome aboard.
Welcome.
Thank you.
We have a lot of faith in Judge Juarez and, uh, it's even better that we have, uh, somebody from our own community that can play an active role in, in, uh, decisions on crimes that are committed here within the city. So, um, all I could tell you is be careful of certain intersections, right, Judge?
Yes.
I couldn't help that. Um, are you gonna swear them in this evening?
Uh, yes, I actually have the forms and I can do that in my office after the resolution passed.
Awesome. Well, then, if that's the case, uh, does anybody have any questions or comments for our new relief judges? Is that what you meant?
Associate judge and relief judge.
Associate judge and relief judge. Mr. Bullock?
Uh, no, it's, make the motion.
Councilwoman Carson?
There, now I'm on. Uh, I wanted to welcome you to the city. Um, and Judge, I wanted to thank you and your selection. Um, it's a nice addition to see females. Um, so, thank you. Um, and I know you'll do a great job, so.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for being here.
Mr. McElhany?
Thank you.
Okay, alright, so now we're going to, uh, consider resolution 2017-25. I'm open for a motion, Mr. McElhany?
I would be, uh, would like to, uh, move to approve resolution 2017-25.
Thank you, Mr. Bullock.
Second, I motion?
Have a motion and a second on resolution 2017, 20, 25. Will the city attorney please read the title?
Resolution 2017-25, resolution appointing substitute municipal court judges.
Great. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion's carried. Welcome aboard.
Thank you.
You can go on back and get sworn in and you're ready, ready for work.
Thank you, guys.
Do they, no, uh, they could swear them in right here.
Yeah, go ahead.
You wanna do it here, Judge? Do you mind? I think it's, it's good for the rest of the public to see.
I didn't wanna hold you all up.
No.
Oh, no.
You're, you're fine, I think that would be great.
Take a picture as well.
Yes, yeah. Do we have someone from staff that can come take a picture? Jody's coming now. Alright.
Well, usually use the microphone.
Yeah, come on up here.
Do you want to do it?
Yeah, it's fine.
Yeah.
We're gonna make a, this is gonna be a presentation.
At least you got a sport coat on, Judge.
I have another microphone for the, uh...
Oh.
Oh, yeah, that's okay. Okay. Raise your hand. Aye, and state your name.
Aye, Tamara Bauer.
Do solemnly swear or affirm?
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will support the Constitution and the laws of the United States?
That I will support the Constitution and the laws of the United States.
And of the state of Colorado?
And of the state of Colorado.
And the charter and ordinances?
And the charter and ordinances.
Of the City of Commerce City?
Of the City of Commerce City.
And I will perform all of the duties?
And I will perform all of the duties.
Pertaining to office of associate municipal judge?
Pertaining to the office of associate municipal judge.
Of the City of Commerce City?
Of the City of Commerce City.
Of the state of Colorado?
Of the state of Colorado.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Congratulations. Congratulations. Aye, state your name?
I'm Melissa Beato.
Do solemnly swear or affirm?
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will support the Constitution and the laws of the United States?
That I will support the Constitution and the laws of the United States.
And of the state of Colorado?
And of the state of Colorado.
And the charter and ordinances of the City of Commerce City?
And the charter and ordinances of the City of Commerce City.
And I will faithfully perform?
And I will faithfully perform.
All of the duties?
All of the duties.
Pertaining to the office of relief municipal judge?
Pertaining to the office of relief municipal judge.
Of the City of Commerce City?
Of the City of Commerce City.
Of the state of Colorado?
Of the state of Colorado.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Thank you, I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you and welcome aboard.
Thank you.
Alright, get back to the right spot here. Next, we have a presentation. Presentation is with Smart Commute Metro North. I'd like to invite Karen Stewart forward to give that presentation. Good evening and welcome, Karen.
Thank you, Mayor, and thanks so much for having us. Uh, my colleague, Will Dreyer, is here with me and he'll, Will, do you wanna take, you got that? Oh, he's got that. Okay. Okay. Once again, thanks so much for having us, council members and mayor and many of you. Uh, we see at NADA every month when you come, so I wanna give you a little presentation about who we are, what we do, and how we can interact more with all of you. The North Area Transportation Alliance is otherwise known as NADA and Commerce City is part of that Transportation Alliance. And it was founded in, uh, 2009 by the jurisdictions in the north area, primarily Adams County, who felt that we weren't getting our share of transportation improvements, funding, projects, all of the above, and so came together, um, in a membership to really promote, uh, regional transportation priorities. The NADA members are on the screen there and as you see, there's, uh, 13 communities, Commerce City being one of those, that engage in NADA. who felt that we weren't getting our share of transportation improvements, funding, projects, all of the above. And so came together in a membership to really promote regional transportation priorities. The NADA members are on the screen there and as you see, there's 13 communities, Commerce City being one of those, that engage in NADA every month along with your senior staff. This is Smart Commute's service area and Smart Commute is a, an agency attached to NADA. In 2012, NADA went after a Dr. Cog funding grant to create a transportation management organization. There are seven in the Denver metro region and all of them are attached to corridors of transportation. And this is the NADA service area and the Smart Commute service area, it's pretty big. Smart Commute is, just like any of the other TMOs, a nonprofit public-private partnership and we are partners with area businesses, developers, employers, community organizations. In 1988, the Federal Highway Administration came up with the idea of transportation management organizations and they're a function of the federal government that comes through the regional metropolitan planning organization, Dr. Cog. And it's a way for transportation improvements and policy to be shared between local jurisdictions and members of the local community. And you can see there, we're committed to advancing multimodal transportation solutions in our north area. That's exclusively what we do and we work to reduce congestion and improve air quality because our funding says that's what our mission is. This year's Smart Commute Metro North has the following board members and officers. I thought you might find it interesting that we have a mixture of elected officials and business people. And our membership is open to anybody who'd like to be on our board. Right now, we have 12 people on our board and if we have more interest, we can maybe expand it in 2018. We have a working board. So each of the people on this board, from our Google representative to our United Power representative to, you probably recognize Gene Putman on there, all of them have made a commitment to move the mission of transportation improvements forward and they're hardworking board members. These are our membership partners, these are people and businesses who pay into our organization in a membership. Some of them do that because they're into sustainability and they believe that what we do is important for our north area and they're community players. And others do it because they're interested in what's happening in our north area in terms of what's coming down the Pike and Priority project. So we have a pretty, a pretty good group here. I just wanted to highlight Highlands Hills, Waterworld. They joined us because we found some funding to help them with their youth employees get a free call and ride pass all summer long to get to work. Many of those kids aren't 16 and they don't have a way to get to Waterworld. And we worked with RTD to change the service area of the call and ride so that a lot of the children who live in Federal Heights and Thornton and Northland can avail themselves of that call and ride in order to get to work. And I think last year we spent, I can't remember what the dollar figure was, but we had about 500 passes throughout the summer. Smart Commute's like many other of the transportation management organizations, seven in the Denver metro region. This is how we're funded. We have a Dr. Cog partnership grant, all the TMOs have that. It's an 80/20 grant, so we're always looking for local match funding for that. We have an RTD marketing grant, all the TMOs have that. We have something that's a little different, we have a C.DOT IGA for I-25 express lanes, TDM, and TDM is transportation demand management. That really means strategies to get people out of single occupancy vehicles, whether it's encouraging transit or putting car pulls together or van pulls together or helping people figure out walking routes. And then we also have a regional air quality council grant this year, Every Trip Counts and that's for all of Adams County and all of our catchment area. We have memberships, specialized program funds. We do a special event every year called Transform and that'll be in June and I'll send out more information through your representatives. And then in the last two years, the North Area Transportation Alliance has contracted with us to be their administrator. That's our funding. We say that we are information, action, and advocacy. In information, we go to over 30 community events and festivals and I've seen lots of you at the Commerce City festivals. We always staff a booth there and we give out a lot of information. We give out public transit information, bus and rail options. You know now that North Metro Railline is coming forward and we should have it open next year. At your community events, people come and talk to us for a lot of minutes about how excited they are to have North Metro Railline come to Commerce City and what a boon this is gonna be to be able to get back and forth into Denver, not only to get to work, but to get people from Denver who work up here in as well. We give bus and call and ride information and we also work with your RTD board members to promote that kind of thing. We have walking and biking routes and trail maps that we hand out. One of the things that we do that's kind of unique is that we're willing to do point-to-point travel training. So, for example, we were at a senior resource fair last week and we had an elderly man from Commerce City come up and say that many people would take the bus, but they don't know how. And one of the things we do if asked is we do point-to-point. So we can go to a nursing home or affordable housing area or somewhere else where people are interested in using the bus but don't know how to use it, don't know what the route is, don't know how much it costs, don't know how to get off the bus, don't know how it functions and we'll accompany them and help them with that. And that's something that we do as a TMO. We really promote bike-to-work day stations. We do support for Adams County at the Confluence over at 72nd and Colorado Boulevard and then we have two or three other ones that we staff ourselves. We do the Every Trip Counts program with Regional Air Quality. There's a program through Dr. Cog called School Pool, which is a lot like, like car sharing, car matching, but it's inclusive for that school and it's a way for schools to be able to match people who want to carpool together within that closed school. And that's been a very popular program. We promote all of the Denver Regional Council of Governments programs. And then the Denver Regional Mobility and Access Council, Dr. Mack, provides a Getting There guide. It's a really comprehensive resource guide and I'm gonna leave some for you. Those are one of the most popular things that we hand out at your community festivals because it tells all the different options available within the greater Denver area, particularly for seniors and for disabled people to be able to find transportation. And while we focus a lot on commuters because that's the biggest bang for the buck, getting people out of congestion, this guide is excellent and we'd encourage any of you who have contacts within the community that want more of these guides to use this resource guide and call Dr. Mack and they'll send you the guide. And it's just been updated last summer, so it's a very good one. We collaborate with Adams County Sustainability Programs and we promote the North Metro Railline and we'll be working to think about first and last mile solutions for Commerce City at your 72nd stop. And we're really eager for it to come. One of the things we do with employers is we give them transit options and we talk about pass programs. As you know, RTD has the Flex Pass and the Eco Pass and we can help them figure out if those are good options for employers. We do onsite presentations. We often do carpool and vanpool matching through something that we call an employee commute visualization map. And we work with HR in those, in those employers to figure out where their employees are coming from and we'll show you that map in a minute. And that really helps people self-identify places that they could maybe carpool together or if they're close to transit. We do workforce analysis, education, and support and we also help implement guidance for telework if any employers are interested in telework. I'll tell you, very many times employers will call us and say two things. We have great jobs, we can't get our workforce here, there's no transit here, what can you do to help us? And we'll come in and try to help with that. The other thing that they say is, I have so many employees now, I need to build a new parking lot and I don't wanna do that. I don't wanna use up the land that I have for a new parking lot. Can you help us put together a program that either can put van pulls together or car pulls together or figure out how we can encourage our employees to do transit? And there's something else that goes with that and that, there's some tax incentives that go along with that. That's a very complicated program, but we have experts that can help them, employers, figure out how they can get tax credits. And then you can see the rest of the things that we do. We're in particular interested in doing bike share programs. You know, there's B-Cycle downtown, but Zagster is coming to the area and they're interested in putting up bike share that will connect trails so that if we put a bike share up in Thornton and one in Commerce City, people can ride between those areas on the trails. And we'd be happy to talk more about that as well. Our Smart Commute employer services really are about analysis for the employer, education about all the things that can happen for that employer and then we do a lot of support for that employer. We're really good with hands-on. This is the commute visualization map and this will show you that the star in the middle shows where the employees are working and then all the red dots show where their employers, employees come from. And what's interesting, when we do a transportation fair at an employer's office, this is a blind map, we don't put anyone's name or address on it, but sure enough, people will come up and say, oh, I live right there, I didn't realize five people live next to me. And then we encourage them to work with their HR to figure out if they could put a van pull together or if they could put a car pull together. And very often, we can incentivize that, we can help pay for three months trial of a van pool or a car pool or we can give free transit passes for a week for people to try that. So, all of those options are available for us to help employers. Wanna talk to you a little bit about Central 70 Project. It's coming. They've got the RFP out now for the constructors and it's 12 miles between I-25 and Tower Road and you can see how close it is to Commerce City and all of you are already worried about what the impact of that project is going to have on your employers and your citizens. It's a five-year construction project. And this is just off of Tony DeVito's slides talking about what this project actually is. So we'd like to tell you that we have a collaborative partnership with Northeast Transportation Connections. Angie Malpietti and I have been asked to do the TDM for this project. TDM, transportation demand management. The Northeast Transportation Connections are gonna provide the neighborhood and community support for mobility options within the footprint of those neighborhoods, Swansia and Gloveville and that. And then Smart Commute will be providing the employer and workforce commuting options and incentives, which are more the travel pattern that goes along I-70. And we're really cognizant of the impact on Commerce City and we'd like to engage Commerce City business development staff to talk about those employers that we should be connecting with. So as the project starts in 2018, C.DOT is funding us in the beginning of the summer and we will hire somebody just for this project to do research on who those businesses are and what those travel patterns are so that we can hit the ground running in 2018 and give incentive packages. If you're familiar with the T-Rex project that's 15 years old now, that was really a model for doing these kinds of highway projects and what we found is people will look for other options and if you can also incentivize them by giving them some free passes or helping them carry the cost of a carpool or a vanpool for a couple of months until they can accept the behavior change that comes with that, you really can get people off the road. Teleworking is another thing. I realize that industrial employers really, and shift workers really can't do that telework kind of thing, but we try to customize the information that we give to your employers to help them. So we're here tonight to ask you, how can we help you with your transportation challenges, not just for your employers, but for commuters and for residents? And we are leaving our contact information with you. We've got the website. We have iDrive I-25, which is a project that we're doing right now, TDM on I-25, and it's got incentives for I-25. We'll have the same thing for Central 70. Once that gets started, we'll have incentives that you can go up, go and look on the website to see what those incentives are. I'm Karen Stewart. Will is with me tonight and he's a program manager for I-25. Catherine is our employee, employer outreach specialist and we'll be hiring somebody else to do Central 70 probably by early summer, midsummer. Be happy to take any questions and try to answer them.
Well, first of all, thank you for coming in tonight. You know, me and Mr. Teeter get updates regularly at the monthly NADA meetings. And as you know, last, at the last NADA meeting, I brought up some concerns once we got the I-70 presentation laid out. We do have some major concerns of what's gonna happen, five years. We know 270 can't handle that traffic. And we know we're gonna see some of that transit traffic coming through our neighborhood, local, collecting type of roads. We're the largest employer of logistics businesses in the state of Colorado. So, the UPS's, the FedEx freights, the Old Dominions. Those are, those are gonna be challenges because we know a lot of those are going to, they migrate and get onto I-70 and where do they go? They're not gonna go down 270. So we know, we have a couple other problems in Commerce City that most cities don't deal with. We have the Rocky Mountain National Wildlife Refuge that takes up 21 square miles that is really hard to get around if you are trying to avoid traffic on I-70 and having to get around it. The river and railroads. So, there's a, there's a lot of challenges with transportation and what we have for north-south collectors and east-west collectors. So, it's gonna be extremely challenging. And not only that, right now Commerce City's got about $160 million going into infrastructure improvements and Tower Road is under construction, Highway 2 is under construction. So that takes out two of those north-south collectors that, so, we know that'll be done at the end of the year and I know that'll help ease some capacity, but it's not gonna fix the problem. So we're glad you're there to help. I, I mean, this I-70 issue is just not going away for me. I had a Denver Business Journal contacting me today saying, hey, what about the reroute option? I'm doing a story and, and we understand there's, you know, there's groups in the area of Swansia and Gloveville that want to relocate and take this down 270 to I-76. I explained what we went over at NADA. I'm not necessarily saying this all for your benefit Karen, but I think my council and the people in Commerce City need to know. The cost is prohibitive, number one. Number two, if, if the concerns of moving it are because of health-related issues to the highway, I don't want those health-related issues affecting residents of Commerce City. So, not a good solution for Commerce City to reroute I-70. I do know, from what we've heard, everything is that the state now has everything they need to move forward. The record of decision is done, it will stay on alignment and they're gonna start moving forward with getting the contractors aligned and start construction. So, any way that Smart Commute can help us in the process of dealing with five years' worth of migratory traffic, trying to find a way through our community to get around construction on I-70, I'm very thankful and helpful and hope that we see you on a regular basis and can communicate what our needs are and what services you can help provide. So, thank you very much for coming in this evening.
Thank you Mayor, I appreciate that. And anytime you'd like us to come back and talk, please just let us know and we'll be happy to give you an update. The contract is out to C.DOT right now for the TDM services for Northeast Transportation Connections and for us and they're moving that contract forward. I think within three months, we should get that upfront funding and when we hire someone, right away, we're gonna engage Commerce City to see what we can do on the front end before stuff starts to happen. So, it'll be a challenge, no doubt. But C.DOT sees the value now, having seen what had happened on T-Rex, what happened on US-36 and what's- on T-Rex, what happened on US-36, and what's happened on I-25. The TDM can work, and it can help. It can't fix everything, but it's one of the tools that we can use to help the surrounding communities that'll be impacted by these massive transportation projects.
Absolutely. I do have some other council members, I believe, that have some questions. Mr. Bullock?
No.
No? Mr. McAdonny.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you for coming tonight. Can we go to page four of your presentation, please? There we go. Can you please clarify the boundary in that southeast quadrant? Because as it's drawn, it excludes about half of our population.
Yeah. What we say is, this is the basic boundary, but we do all of Commerce City, all of Brighton, all of Longmont. So, when it was drawn, it was drawn along corridors primarily, and the boundary was provided to Dr. Cog as a corridor boundary. One of the reasons that is, is because the other TMOs also have boundaries, and so as they put it on the Dr. Cog website, you'll see shaded areas of where each TMO does business. We kind of butt up against Northeast Transportation Connections, but we're collaboratively with them on your edge of Commerce City that's not shown on there.
So, to staff, and then I have some follow-up questions. So, to staff, I don't know if anybody's here that can speak to this. When I look at the way that this is drawn with the north segment of Highway 2 excluded, with 104th, 96th, 120th, and Tower Road, all of our major connectors in the northern range, again, servicing half of our population, that's a huge concern. And I'd like to see a version of this if, in fact, we have an abutting TMO that truly covers that. If not, I would ask that this be redrawn formally to amend what's on record with Dr. Cog, to reflect the true boundary that's being supported. And the reason I say that is severalfold. One, we are investing currently, after having Highway 2 devolved from the state, one of the key considerations in the design of that corridor was to include a detached bike lane down the entire corridor. You know, we've had, to my recollection, one or two really great Bike-to-Work Day programs supported in the city in the 10 years that I've been on council. And as a cyclist, I'm not okay with that. Now, part of that is that we haven't had great bicycle commuting connectivity out of our northern range. And so, Highway 2 will present a major addition to that system. Tower Road also will contain separate bike lanes on either side of that corridor. I would love to see this body working with, I assume it's the Denver or the other north-area body that you were talking about, in terms of that Tower Road corridor. And as we complete that segment of Tower Road, we're also coordinating in partnership with Denver on the missing piece between the Commerce City line and essentially Penya Boulevard. But our bike lane will end essentially there, and Denver doesn't carry bike lanes currently in that segment to the south. So, if I think about planning for diversion of vehicle trips, I'm not going to be able to encourage one of my residents to take their bike down Tower Road and then stop when there is a new light rail station, you know, another mile and a half down the road. So, it would be wonderful to see that kind of partnership, to make sure that there is a way to extend a safe corridor to get folks via some means other than a car to that station. The same holds true for Highway 2 ultimately, and making sure that we're looking with you as a partner to make sure that we've got a way for folks to get down through the city using the connectivity down Highway 2, and ultimately connecting into the Stapleton corridor, which does appear to be covered in your boundary. The other comment I'll make on the piece of the community that's at least omitted visually here is, when we talk about travel to work, many people travel to work via the airport. And when we talk about population north metro area, they don't go to I-70 and then come back to the airport. They're coming right through our backyard, our front yard. So, 104th, 120th, 96th Avenue, you'll, any time of day, see any of the van services, which is great, because these are people who are using van services from Greeley, from Boulder, from Longmont, et cetera, coming through our community. And so, I would love to have some more formal visibility of how much they're using our corridors, because that's, it's great, because it's removing single-vehicle trips from the system. But it would also be interesting to see how much volume they're really representing through the community. And then, I think the other piece about the, at least inferred omission of Highway 2, is that that also omits the right-of-way preservation for Nate. So, when we talk about fast tracks and transit options, right, Nate is placeholder right through that Highway 2 corridor, up to the city and county building, and ultimately up to Brighton. And so, that represents a huge opportunity. Back to our design discussions around Highway 2, one of the things that we've also considered is, how do we phase in ultimately BRT through that corridor in advance of having light rail? And I think that's another area where the advocacy of Nate would be huge in helping to send that message to Dr. Cog, where it's often difficult to have, as you said from the outset, that the north-area voice is heard. But to be able to take points north and handle BRT down Highway 2 or down Highway 85, where we have another high drama conversation going on, I would love to see those kinds of things advocated for. You know, we have, fast tracks in general is primarily being built in well-established areas, right, and sort of retrofitted into those areas. We have these opportunities in the northeast area to build it right the first time and not have to shoehorn fast tracks or, you know, next tracks into that system if we really plan aggressively. And I think that's where this partnership, to me, has, certainly there's the immediate conversations, but really advocating for those future, think, decision points, if that makes sense. And then, my last point, and I'll surrender the microphone. You talked about the bike share, and I think that's a great piece as well. You touched on, or the mayor touched on, the volume of visitors that we see at the refuge. And I know Fish and Wildlife had talked about, as they try and expand visits to that facility and expand the offerings at that facility, the idea of having bike-share facilities in this immediate area where we have the ability to have folks somehow from either the Stapleton neighborhood or our own neighborhoods come to this area and use a bike to tour the refuge. Again, if we can redraw this so that we see the north edge of the refuge where we also have residents, and we've had suggestion that there will be some through-the-fence opportunities with the refuge, to have bike share and be able to get from side one to side two of that refuge, to take advantage of either the refuge itself or entertainment options here at Dick's, those would be great opportunities as well, I would see, in terms of bike share. So, thanks for tolerating my string of comments. I really appreciate it.
Those are great observations, and that's really what we came here to hear. I'll tell you that there is no TMO to the east of us. We're the latest TMO. We were created just under five years ago, and Dr. Cog is the one who allows those to be created within the area. But Angie Malpietti at Northeast Transportation Connections and I have talked a lot about this area that doesn't have any service. And we can go back and figure out how we can move our boundary. In essence, whatever you say you'd like us to do, being a member of NADA and being one of our creators, we can put that on to our scope of work. There's been a lot of talk about a DIA TMO at some point. Right now, just Dr. Cog is working with the employers out at DIA, but that's going to be next, I think, especially with Eritropolis and all the stuff that's coming down the pipe. And we have a conference call later this week with Zagster, and those are great points. We'll talk to them about that. And the good news about Zagster is, it's not like B-Cycle where you have to have a heavy concentration of urban bike users. It's more, it's more related to suburban use and then connections along trails. And they're working on the west side right now of I-25, but we feel the east side of I-25, and what I mean by that is not necessarily I-25, but all those communities that don't have access to I-25 necessarily could do this bike share. So, we'll take what you said back, and we'll do some thinking about it, and maybe I can work with your staff to figure out how we can give you more robust representation in Smart Commute. I'd ask my board of directors to allow me to have the expansion of that, but I don't think that's an issue at all, because really, we were created through NADA to serve all the communities of NADA. So, if that's what you need, that's what we'll try to do.
That would be great, and, you know, it may be as simple as moving it to our growth boundary. And then, as we talk with, you know, as the conversations around some sort of a DIA TMO come into play, you mentioned the airport, and obviously, we have the Adams-Kenny Airport Coordinating Committee and the DIA Coordinating Committee, so those would be great vehicles to talk about how that happens. Just on your Zagster conversation, and I know you mentioned our forthcoming light rail station at 72nd Colorado, I was just talking with Commissioner Odoricio the other day about, I continue to think about our light rail station a little differently than a lot of the traditional TODs that have taken shape, where it's, you know, sort of this mixed-use residential restaurant, sort of, you know, urban TOD. To me, it's an employment destination, and the ability to bring people to that station and be able to get them out. The challenge I always see with light rail in that context is, we don't have well-established movement from that location out into the community. And I was giving Commissioner Odoricio the example of Atlanta, where I used to travel all the time on business, and you get into the perimeter area or Buckhead area and you take MARTA. My office complex, for example, and most of the offices, had the small little vans. And so, there was a constant circulator basically from your office park over to the nearest MARTA station, which allowed people, or encouraged people, I rather, to take MARTA when they wouldn't, it was a distance too far to walk or bike, especially in that hot heat of Atlanta. So, that was a nice alternative. And I think the ability to combine something like that, where you could have circulator service, or bikes that people could essentially check out and bring back at the end of the workday, would be great, and in reducing the number of people who have to bring a bike on light rail versus, you know, trying to stash their own equipment. So, just those options, especially where we've got, the current community there is not financially able to potentially buy, you know, additional tools to get to and from. And so, however we can help connect that would be fantastic. So, again, thank you. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Thanks very much.
All right, Mr. Douglas.
Thank you very much for your presentation. And Jason touched on a lot of things I wanted to say as far as moving this boundary over. Had the opportunity, a couple weeks ago, to go to a smart city conference and talk about multimodal transportation. First mile, last mile is huge. Here, we have a great opportunity to have RTD come down Tower Road straight to 61st and Penya. I've talked to many of folks who take the ride, 104th X downtown, and then just the convenience of doing 15 minutes instead of 45 minutes to 61st and Penya. I know on Highway 2, looking at the BRT, a future lane, but also the future growth of the rail line coming in might just take that out. We may have an opportunity on Tower Road to have a BRT lane straight down, because right now, if you wanted to go to 61st and Penya, to Skyride, it takes you 36 minutes from 104th to get to DIA. And if you wanted to go to 61st and Penya, that's an hour and 47 minutes, when that could be an easily 15, 20-minute ride. So, I would like to see that as an option, and what we can do to put that in, maybe as a pilot or so. You have a lot of folks in that corridor who would love to go to 61st and Penya, it's a much shorter ride, coming back and forth, instead of having to wait downtown and get up to the area, but then they have to go to the airport to get home, and that's another, you know, that's three hours out of the day instead of 40 minutes. So, I appreciate that, and I believe we will keep in contact to see what we can do to expedite that. So, we're not waiting until, you know, many years later.
I think early planning is great, and, you know, RTD has a lot of challenges right now financially. And any time we talk about expansion of service, they always push back and say, "Whoa, we don't have any money for that." But I think the south has really done it well, and we're not giving up on that. We're making sure first and last mile is at least recognized as an issue for us up here, and trying to work with communities and figure out, when that rail line comes, how do you reconfigure the local service? And what's happened elsewhere, sometimes that local service changes dramatically, and people who did have service loses their service. I think lessons learned from the lines that have already been built. We can have a lot of voices talking about, "Don't let that happen here." And while we don't have any control over RTD, we certainly are a squeaky wheel, and they often see us in front of them, talking about the kinds of things you've talked about tonight. We're happy to always go in front of RTD and carry a message, so appreciate that.
I appreciate that, because the 104th corridor, Apple Tower, when that's done, you know, that's going to be a great opportunity for businesses to come in. There's already a residential community starting right now, so there's going to be a need. It's going to be growing every year.
Yeah. Thank you.
Well, thank you, Mayor. It's always a pleasure to have you in Commerce City.
Well, it's nice of you to say that. Thank you, and I appreciate being here, and thanks for all the work you do. And we'll see you at your community events. We're excited about it. That's one of our favorite things, those Thursday night picnics that you have. Great entertainment, some of the best music we've heard at any of the events that we go to, so keep up the good work, and we'll be there.
Absolutely. Thanks for coming in.
Thanks very much.
Okay. We're going to move on to administrative council business. Couple items we need to take care of. First, I'm going to ask for a motion to cancel the March 13, 2017 study session. Mr., Councilwoman Carson.
So moved.
Mr. Bullock.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to counsel, to cancel March 13, 2017 study session. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion is carried. Next, I would like to ask City Manager McBroom to provide the council with potential dates for the next Urban Renewal Authority meeting.
Thank you, Mayor Ford. At last week's study session, we mentioned that there was originally going to be a URA meeting this evening that was going to have to move. At council's direction, we reached out to the three URA board members who are not council members to get their availability. Looks like the best date for the three of them was April 5. It's actually, I believe it's a Wednesday evening. We know that Ms. Carson is out of town, traveling back into town that day, so there was nothing else on the city council calendar that evening. The three URA board members who aren't council members also identified April 6, but there's a youth commission meeting that evening, so our suggestion would be April 5. If that sounds okay to the URA board members that are here this evening, we would then proceed and ask Chairman Ford to call a meeting for April 5, but no action is required of council tonight, except to give us some feedback with your URA board member hat on, on whether April 5 seems like a reasonable date to have a board meeting.
Well, I don't have a problem with April 5. I would just say, you know, we have the new, what do they call it, 10-something, the amendment to the URA from the state legislature, what's the, 1042?
1348.
1348. I knew it had a 1 and a 3 or whatever in there. It's been extremely frustrating, because we, you know, I always thought that, hey, these are the new, this is the new rules. We have to have special districts. We have to have someone on it from the school district. We have to have someone on it from the county. That in itself is trying. However, I always thought that we were going to do things on our terms and be able to schedule our meetings. And I get it, we have to try to make sure everybody can be there. It just makes it that much more frustrating to see that now we're looking at having to convene Wednesday night meetings, when anybody that looks at my schedule can see that I'm just as busy as anyone else. And so, it's very, very frustrating to see that we can't handle this on regular Monday nights. And I will tell you, the other frustration I have is, after the last Urban Renewal Authority meeting, I hope now we have all the participants that are necessary, that are set. I know we're still lacking the potential, if we want to add the one, which would be the mayor's choice selection. But the last meeting, I don't think there's a councilperson one that walked away from there with any optimism. And so, I'm hoping that staff has... any optimism. And so I, I'm hoping that staff has all of the information necessary and that we're ready and prepared by April 5th because I don't want to go through another, another, not that staff didn't do their job, but I don't want to go through another scenario like we had at the last Urban Renewal Authority meeting where we're just lacking context and we are lacking membership. So could you touch on that for a minute before I say okay?
Well, a quick note about the URA meeting schedule on an ongoing basis. I think the general idea is to try to have them on Monday evenings. However, there is a sense at the last URA board meeting that the next URA board meeting might be a longer one. And so it might be best not to have it on a Monday evening. But that's certainly a good discussion to have when all of the board is present on April 5th. I understand there is a representative from the special districts who the URA board would be appointing at your next meeting on April 5th. The representative from the fire district has received the support of the special districts. So that'll be your third non-council member, board member. We have been actively meeting with the other agencies that we're required to negotiate an IGA with as part of the amendments associated with Bill 1348. So it should be a very thorough discussion on April 5th that I think will meet the board's expectations.
All right. Now I'm going to ask the council.
Wait a minute, do you have a question?
I do.
Mr. Teeter. Mr. Teeter.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As of tonight, this wasn't Lisa's fault, but as of tonight, I did remind her that I always meet with Dr. Cog on the first Monday of the month. I do have two meetings at night, one at four o'clock and one at six o'clock at the same place. But if you want to have this without me, you're fine. But if you'd like to move it, then.
I'm glad you brought that up, Mr. Teeter, because I knew there would be some challenges. And no, we want to make sure you're there so we can schedule that meeting to be at 9:30 or so the evening of the 5th. How's that?
9:30 at night? It'll work.
I just, I just wanted to see if I can rattle some cages. So there is one concern that Mr. Teeter won't be able to make that. Is there any other council members that have a problem with Wednesday night, April 5th? Mr. McAlton?
I have a problem with that.
Okay. Anyone else? Looks like we would be losing two of our council members to accommodate three, three of our council members to accommodate three new members because of timing. So I wonder, is there, is there another date that works? Or I know this is, I feel sorry for staff on this because it's going to be a struggle to put this stuff together.
Why don't we keep trying? I don't know of other dates that were proposed to the other three board members. So let us keep working it and we'll bring back to you folks some other alternatives, either at another council meeting or via some email communication so that we can get something set up in the next week or two.
I appreciate that. Thank you. And thanks for trying. I know this is going to be challenging. All right. Now I'm open for other administrative council business. And we're going to start off here. Mr. Bullock? No? Mr. McAlton? Okay. Councilwoman Carson.
Thank you, Mayor. Actually, tonight might not be the best night for an example of why I believe that we need an ordinance on meeting time limitation since it's only 7:27. But adopting such an ordinance, it really has been on my list for a long time of things that I would like to get done before my time here is done. Within my first two years of serving on this council, we did have a meeting that went into the wee hours of the morning. There was some very important business that was done that night. I don't believe there's any transparency when we hold meetings into the wee hours of the night. So I believe it's our responsibility to hold meetings during reasonable times. So with that being said, I would like to put forward a motion on meeting time limitation.
Do you have an idea on the hours of?
I do. I do.
Okay, then throw it out there. Because we can't make a decision if we don't know.
So.
It's called drop dead time.
Drop dead? I don't have that language right here. But anyway, I would like to move to direct the city attorney to prepare an ordinance limiting the time of city council meetings to four hours. And some of this you can discuss, but subject to extension, 15-minute extensions by majority vote of city council. And then, city attorney, I would also add, if meeting cannot be concluded in two extensions, then council will return Tuesday evening to finish business. That takes us into 10:30 PM. And I'm not sure too many of our citizens like to stay up past 10:30 paying attention to what we're doing.
All right. There's a motion on the floor. I'm going to open for a second and then we'll have discussion. Is there a second? Mr. McAlton?
I'll second and then I have some comments.
Okay. All right, I have a motion and a second. I'm open for comments. I believe I'll start off. I normally don't, but I'm going to this time. You know, I've been here for a long, a long, long time. And I know we had a procedure in place that once it hit 11 o'clock, the city council then had to make a decision if we were going to stay and continue with the business at hand, or if we were going to stop and come back on Tuesday evening to finish the business on hand. We all know that sometimes poor decisions are made late at night. And it's because everybody's tired, everybody, you know, so I don't, I'm not doubting what you're saying. I'm saying, just keep in mind that if we do put a limit, that we also are committing to finishing on another day of the week, whether it be Tuesday or Wednesday. And my guess is because of open records laws, that we would have to have a 24-hour notice, which would mean we would have to reconvene that meeting on Wednesday rather than on Tuesday. That can have an effect like we saw tonight with Mr. Teeter and, and Dr. Cog. And I'm sure there's always going to be some conflict. I mean, we've all been able to set aside Monday nights because that's the one night of the week that we have council meetings. So nothing against what you're proposing. All I would ask is that the city council members acknowledge the commitment that they're also putting forward to potentially a second night of the week for reconvening these council meetings. And it's that commitment that I think goes hand in hand with support for ending by 10:30. Not that I'm against it. I just want to make sure everybody is fully aware of the commitment that that also ties them to. I've seen, I've seen it happen a lot. I have, I've had very, I can't say I've had a lot of meetings that went past 11 o'clock at night. And I had a discussion earlier with the city attorney and the city manager and talked about how these meetings get put together, how the meeting's agendas get set. And I know that our staff tries to figure out timing. And like a meeting like tonight, I actually committed to some of the staff that, hey, you know what? I know Stephen Renee have to get out of here. This is going to be an hour and 45 minutes. And I'm eating into the last 15 minutes that I have to make good on my commitment. And so I'm kind of blowing it for myself here by having this discussion. However, they do their best at setting these agendas to where they don't go extremely late. Some of the cause of why these meetings will go late is because some people like to talk more than others. Some people get more engaged on issues, on different issues, issues that are passionate to them. And they, they make these meetings go late, but for good reason, not for, not for bad reason. The other thing that we have no control over is if, God forbid, someone shoots a dog in Commerce City and we have 50 people or 100 people that show up and we have 100 people on our citizen communication, we absolutely have no control over that. However, we do have an obligation to take care of the city business. And so that's why I put that commitment piece in there as well. But I agree with you. Bad decisions get made late at night. And I, I think we should have limitations to that. Just reiterating the commitment that comes with setting an ordinance of this nature. All right, that's my little spiel. And I will move on. Any other discussion? Mr. Bullock and then Mr. McAlton?
When I first started on city council, we had a council that had a drop dead time of nine o'clock. Drop dead. At nine o'clock, whether we were done or not, I can guarantee you, two members got up and we could be in the middle of a vote. They got up and left. And business was never actually, we did business worse because we were always trying to hurry it because these people figured that their nine o'clock was more important than their election to city council. I would strongly disagree with any drop dead time. I figured that the time we are here to do business, we should be here and get it done. Sean hit on an interesting point that because of sometimes passion and sometimes longevity, people talk longer than others. Some people just, some things just get spread out. Very rarely do we have meetings that go to 10:30, 11 o'clock. And I, I've watched it on different councils that bad decisions are made after 11 o'clock, you know. But I would be totally against, my vote would be against putting anything into ordinance where we limit our time because all we're doing then is watching the clock. And it's just like what you said, this isn't a good night for this conversation. But if we, if this was 9:30 now and we had four more things on the agenda, everybody would be either trying to rush it or stall it so we would be here the next night. And quite frankly, I, my next nights are just as busy as my Monday night, but Monday night is council night. So my vote would actually, I would be voting against that ordinance.
Mr. McAlton? I think the mayor and Mr. Bullock make great points, but I think the, the root concern that Councilman Carson raises is one that we have to address and whether it's in the specific form as she's outlined it tonight, and given the hour and the fact that we, I know we have a couple of folks that are going to be catching flights tonight, we probably need to continue this discussion at a separate time. But I will tell you that having been on council now for just shy of 10 years, I can tell you that the most painful decisions that we've made that carried the most painful, long-term repercussions in terms of necessitating ongoing dialogue, creating animosity between council members and drama with council and the public are all directly related to conversations that occurred in those wee hours. 10:30, 11:00, 12:00, 1 o'clock in the morning are not times to converse about contracts with our three employees or matters of legal concern. And so perhaps there is a way to nuance the request of Ms. Carson to differentiate the type of nature of the business. It may be that matters of executive session, contracts, et cetera, need some added rules or policies around, or in addition to what we've done today. Keep in mind, we've evolved that. We used to have executive sessions occur at the end of a meeting. And so what happened is we'd have a lengthy meeting, lots of, you know, dare I say, hot air for the right reasons. But then you end up in an executive session that may be starting at 10:00 PM and it requires two hours of conversation and people are, you know, I, in most cases, had been at work since 5:30 in the morning. I know others had been up since 4:00 in the morning. So that makes it tough. So it's not in the best interest of the community or this council to do business at those times where we're not operating at 100%. So perhaps as the motion maker, Ms. Carson might want to amend her motion to talk about directing staff to explore some options. And then we can continue this conversation via study session and then have a potential draft of an ordinance that modifies some of these rules brought before us in a future meeting. But I think it's, it's an important conversation for us to have in advance of the next council coming on board. And it's something that we should spend some legitimate time discussing over, over the coming months, if that makes sense.
Okay. Mr. Douglas?
Yes. I appreciate Councilman Carson bringing, bringing this up. I can tell you in 2011, prior to that, I watched many, many meetings go real late because we had study sessions, regular meetings together. And I had asked in 2012 that we separate that because it used to be like that. And now we're on that, on that format, which has worked out great. Now our study sessions are long. Sometimes the study sessions are, I remember a past council person, I won't mention the name, you know, would see two hours on there and two hours came, that person left, wanted to leave. So study sessions have been a lot longer because we've had really good discussions. So we get to council, regular meeting, we get the consent agenda unless I myself take something off. Could extend that time. But I think we have gotten a lot better, especially into this year. We don't have those lengthy meetings because we, we have had good, great discussions in our study sessions. So I would like to, for you to think about this and monitor it. Let's see how the rest of the month goes from March, April, May. Because I know, you know, you're, will be termed out during this year. And, and let's see, you know, what we can do. I hate to add another night to, to what I already have because there's other things in the calendar that it's already pre-planned for other boards and commission that would make it really hard to have to move those things. So keep that in consideration. But thank you for bringing this up.
All right. Any new discussion?
Yes, sir.
No, but I want to see if anybody who hasn't had discussion wants to give discussion. Councilwoman Elliott.
Thank you, Mayor. And along those lines was my suggestion of having the executive session prior to a meeting. And also, we've tried to limit ourselves to just one hour. A lot of times we do end up going over because they are important topics to discuss. But along that as well, I mean, I can respect that suggestion. I know that I'm not the most coherent person after 10:30, 11 o'clock at night. Not saying I make terrible decisions, but I'm not at my best. I almost think that this would actually make us aware of our time and use it wisely. Whereas we have tended to go back and forth and have heated arguments. We always go off the beaten path. Staff is well aware that we do that. They have to bring us back to, yes, you do, bring us back to what we're discussing. So I think that would, would be a mindful decision. So and along with Councilman Douglas's point as far as monitor, see how we do for the rest of the month, obviously keeping that in our mind. That's something that can definitely change within the next few weeks or a few months, however that works. But I would be in favor of that.
Okay. Any new discussion? All right, I'm going to go back to Mr. McAlton.
Ms. Elliott just touched on a point that I just wanted to add to my earlier comments. And, you know, one of the, the great complaints in the business world today is that we have too many hours of meetings and nothing happens in meetings. Well, these meetings have to happen in order to provide a window to the public into us representing them and conducting business on their behalf. That said, I think there are key, key things to think about relative to where people are trying to go in terms of meetings. And it's right in line with what Councilman Elliott suggested. And that is, right now, because we don't have a definitive end to a meeting, there is no pressure, appropriate pressure, to budget our time. And I think that's the key, right? We're here as stewards of the community to budget on their behalf and to make decisions on their behalf and create and refine rules on their behalf. It would seem to make sense that we create a budget of a finite amount of time to conduct business within. And that should mean that we give ourselves and the mayor as our facilitator the ability to hold us to account. And certainly, you know, we don't want to shortcut necessary conversation. But at the same time, by being aware of the fact that there is a limit to the time we have in a given night, hopefully it helps each of us think about, you know, the pile on that can often happen, right? hopefully it helps each of us think about, you know, the pile-on that can often happen, right? In the same way that we ask folks during citizen communication or a public hearing, if they have comments on a matter, to simply say, "I agree with the prior commenter." We don't do a good job with that. We say the exact same thing that somebody else might have said. We say the same thing five times. So I think there is value to what Ms. Elliott suggested. And again, I would just suggest that we come back to this on a future night.
All right, any other comments before I go back to the motion maker? Saying none. Councilman Carson.
Thank you all for the response. But Mr. Douglas, one of my points was transparency to the public. So that would not be study session. It's not something that's available for the public to watch online. We're also not voting. And I will tell you that this is the second time since I've sat here that I've brought this topic up. And it's the second time that I've heard negative opposition to it. But it... Ms. Elliott is right. There is no end to a meeting. So I, as somebody who likes to talk, I can just talk as many times as I want. And this is what I see that happens. We're a very thoughtful council. But you have no clue, none of us do, what that topic's going to be that takes us into that midnight, 1 o'clock in the morning hour. And Mr. McAlany is right. I have never left one of those meetings that we felt okay. We were angry at the topic, we were angry at each other, we were angry... We were just angry. We never felt, within days, all of us, that it was the correct outcome of that meeting. And there... I'm not going to say there has been very many of those. But I will tell you, it's... We have all done a very good job being respectful to each other. But it also... It really... If you're wanting citizens to be engaged, you have to also be mindful of how to make them be engaged. We don't do telephone town halls at 11:00 at night because nobody would want us to try to get them to communicate with us then. We don't hold them so that they can continue to listen to us past a certain hour. But we're not mindful here. Yes, we do important business. And because of that, we have all said that we would take on that responsibility. Do I want to come back the next night? And the reason I said Tuesday is because my memory is that it's only been once since I've sat here that we did come back the next night. And I think that was over the resurfacing of the road or something, that we came back the next night. And Ms. Bauer, we were able to come back Tuesday night where we didn't... Okay.
Yeah, there was some...
But Wednesday, I mean, Wednesday's fine, too. I just think that you owe it to the public that they don't have to get up the next day, try to record us, try to find what we said after 11:00 at night. We have staff that has to be back to work the next morning. I would like to encourage all of our population to run for council and don't be afraid that we're going to keep you here until midnight on Monday night. And Monday is the very first workday of the week. And so it tends to make people have a rough week after that. We have council members who have young families. It just makes this very difficult. And as difficult as it is on staff and counselors, I think it's worse that it's difficult for our community to pay attention in real time what is happening. So I would be willing to make an amendment to not limit it to the two 15 minutes, but that every 15 minutes, that it would have to be a majority vote to move into an extension.
Is that acceptable to the second?
You're asking that we make the definitive decision tonight about 15-minute extensions versus having it... Continue this discussion in a study session to refine our recommendation?
Yes. I'm not sure that if it doesn't move tonight, it will move at any other time. Like I said, this is the second time that I have tried to bring this topic up, so...
Mayor Ford, may I just note that the motion that's pending is on directing me to prepare an ordinance that would then come before council for up to two potential opportunities for debate, so...
I will second.
Thank you.
Is there any discussions on the amendment? Mr. Douglas, on the amendment.
Well, I thought we were having a discussion. That's why I had my hand up and wanted to... Something else to say there to this.
On the amendment?
On the amendment. You know, on the amendment, last year, we had such a busy year, we decided to use those fifth Mondays as extra meetings. So I think we... This is not up to us. We put an agenda as to staff. So I think that we need to give staff an opportunity to shorten our schedules and make it more feasible for us to have a better conducive meeting within that timeframe and not have a limit. Because then you can't really think through there or have a good thought process. So maybe we should use those fifth Mondays this year to extend a meeting out, spread it out, and give staff an opportunity to move things around. Because it's not up to us to do the agenda. If there's something on the agenda come Thursday that you don't like, you think things are going to play out a little longer, we all have the opportunity to get with staff and say, "Hey, we're about 20 minutes away from moving to someplace else." Because I think that's going to create more time. So just keep that in mind, too. I appreciate that.
You know, I'll hold it there because I wanted it on the amendment, which was just only to add the 15-minute variables. And you went into... Back into discussion. So with that said, I have a motion to second on the floor to give direction to staff, to give direction to the attorney.
Yes, unless you wanted to vote on the amendment. But I would treat that as... Our council has a tendency to approve of friendly amendments to their own, so...
Well, this is only direction to staff. I think we all get what's going on up here. I don't want to have to make it seem like we've got to be extremely formal when we're trying to give direction to staff. We know what's going on. We know what that amendment is and what it means. So I'm going to ask for a vote on the motion. And second, as amended, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Nay, say nay.
Nay.
All right. Yeah, I'll need a roll call, please.
Can I clarify real quick? Is it unlimited at 15 minutes?
Every 15 minutes. Directing... This is to direct staff there to put an ordinance together.
But I think he's talking about the amendment that I made.
The amendment? During the ordinance that will be created by staff is to include 15-minute intervals to be taken up to allow for extension. Correct? All right, roll call. All right. All right, staff does not have direction to prepare that ordinance at this time. Motion fails. All right, moving back into administrative council business. I saw a whole bunch of lights lit up. I'm going to go through them best that I can. Mr. Amador, you're next.
Yes, I have some things that are concerning me. In 2012, Amendment 64 was passed by the voters of Colorado to go ahead and legalize recreational marijuana. Commerce City did wait two years in the form of a moratorium to wait and see what other communities did do as far as regulation went. And about two years ago, the council decided to move forward to regulate marijuana. And we were presented with a zoning map that looked and really had an idea of a picture of where marijuana retail stores could be sold, could locate within the city. We had a study session last week. And we were presented with a couple of things where there was a potential rezone for another piece of property that had some consequences which would open up a lot more places for marijuana to locate. That being said, we've come across some rezoning and subdividing of properties, which is also changing the map of the zone designation for marijuana within the city and what that looks like. And for fairness of the businesses that would like to locate within the city, I make a motion to enter into an executive session under Section 402, 4B of the Colorado Open Meeting Laws for the purpose of receiving legal advice on the application of Section 5.4 of the City Charter with respect to the enactment of an emergency ordinance to temporarily suspend licensing of certain classes of marijuana businesses and the legal effect of such ordinance. That's the motion.
I have a motion on the floor to go into executive session for the reasons that were stated. Is there a second? Well, let me get the second before we have questions.
I may be prepared to make a second. I have a question that would qualify whether or not I want to support that. So I understand the comments relative to your motion. What is the... Is there a factor that is necessitating the emergency nature of this conversation tonight versus a motion to put this on a subsequent meeting that isn't subject to what you would want to discuss within the executive session? I guess the challenge is, this is hitting me blind. And so I'm a little reluctant to go to her prior discussion, engage in a potentially unlimited conversation in executive session on a subject that I don't have sufficient understanding of the urgency of the matter.
And that's why it is for the legal effect of such an ordinance, just trying to understand what that looks like for legal advice.
Did that answer your question, Mr. McAlany?
Not really.
Okay.
Am I able to make a comment?
Yeah.
Much like the comments in the conversation that we just ended about certain decisions and the nature of which... Under which we make those decisions, the potential to be pressed into making a decision tonight or coming out of that conversation that would have potentially put into place an emergency ordinance, I've got a difficulty with. I can see that if there was a well-known or well, commonly understood subject that we were all privy to, that we... There was a reasonable then motivation for us to undertake an executive discussion to pursue an emergency movement. I don't know that any of us have had a conversation with you to understand where you might be going with this. So it's difficult to take a leap of... Take a leap and then... My expectation is, based on the wording of your motion, that you would be asking us to come out of that executive session tonight to potentially take action. Is that right? Or simply receive advice?
It would be... The second part would be in the form of a motion for staff, yes.
And with that, I'm not prepared to... Given the subject matter in general, I guarantee that's not a short conversation. And none of us are in a position to... My sense as an individual is that we're not in a position to reach a decision tonight. And I'm frustrated that we would be put under the pressure to try and do so without some better preparation. But that's just my take.
All right, I have a motion on the floor. I'm going to entertain a second if there is one. Councilman Carson.
Just out of respect... For Councilman Amador, second.
I have a motion and a second on the floor to go into an executive session to receive legal advice for the reasons stated. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay.
Nay.
Trying to get an idea of how many nays. Yes, please. All those in favor in going into an executive session for the reasons stated, push your yes button. Those opposed, push your no button. Motion carries, five in favor, four opposed.
Mayor Ford.
Yes.
A motion to go into executive session, I believe, requires two-thirds of the quorum present. So the motion would fail.
Okay, so then it fails. That's our parliamentarian giving me the proper advice. So the motion fails to go into executive session to pursue legal advice pertaining to potential emergency moratorium restricting... Potentially restricting marijuana licensing or locations. Correct? Go back to administrative business for the city council. Go to Mr. Douglas.
Yes. Is there any way we could move that to March 20th at the beginning of that meeting?
So Mr. Douglas is requesting the council give staff direction to put it on the agenda for March 20th to have an executive session dealing with potentially emergency ordinance to restrict or prohibit marijuana licensing for certain locations, correct? Does that cover it?
And just for clarification, it's solely for the purpose of...
Legal advice.
Advice on the use of the emergency ordinance procedure and what impact certain restrictions may have.
All right.
But not on the debate at all of...
Right. That's why I got you sitting here.
Just want to make sure that's clear.
All right, does that cover it, Councilwoman? Yep. All right. So now I have a motion to direct staff to put this topic on March...
20th.
20th. Is there a second? I have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay.
Nay.
All right. That one, I don't think we need a roll call. We have eight ayes, one nay. Motion is carried. And we'll go back to administrative council business. Mr. McAlany. That's for earlier. No, Mr. Douglas.
Yes, something different. Down Highway 2, we have those concrete panels that they tore out the asphalt to put the piping in. If we could look at repairing those, because some of those are starting to feel a little rough, it would be greatly appreciated.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Douglas. Is there any additional council administrative business to come before the city council this evening? The lady that wants to have shorter meetings. All right, we're going to move into... We're going to move into reports. City manager.
I do have about a 60-minute city manager update tonight, if that's okay.
I will leave to a minute two.
15-minute intervals. But we did send out a city manager update prior to the meeting this evening. It's fairly short. Telephone town hall results, an update on the junkyard at 120th and Peoria in the city of Brighton that several of you had mentioned, and then some miscellaneous correspondence. So reach out if you have any questions.
Thank you. Mr. Shazley.
I have nothing to report this evening.
All right, I'll get into my report. If I don't cover everything, I'll give the council an opportunity to add to it. The Adams County mayor's lunch, ACC meeting, Deion's grand opening. And by the way, if you haven't been there, you should try it out. It's great food. Rotary, Metro North Economic Breakfast. One of the takeaways from that economic breakfast is that the metro area will need approximately 60 homes a day to sustain the influx of folks moving to Colorado or to the metropolitan area. area, given the fact that Commerce City let almost 600 residential single-family permits last year. We did about 10 days' worth of the need. So kind of keep that into comparison. We had the ACED Executive Committee, which I serve on as the mayor's representative, Rotary, Citizens for Safe Environment, the CASE meeting, Adams County Summit, Rotary again, Telephone Town Hall, which most of the council was at, NADA meeting, Access Housing Mardi Gras, Rotary, Adams County Mayor's Commissioners Youth Awards Dinner at Buffalo Run, Commerce City Business Appreciation Awards. And there's something I want to bring up on that particular piece. Staff did a great job, it's great that we're recognizing businesses within our community. And you know, when I, when I walked out of the Yellow Rose after giving those awards of recognizing these businesses, Tasty Donuts just hit me straight in the face, right across the parking lot, noticing that we had plates with some muffins on it. I really would would like to see us utilize some of our small businesses like Tasty Donuts. I think if there were plates of some of those donuts on there instead of having some muffins, that it would really show that appreciation for the small businesses that we have in our community. So I would like to to put that as a reminder, I'd like to always try to utilize small businesses within our community where we can do so. And then I had a a meeting with a property owner on Highway 2 and 104th Avenue. I brought Mr. McAlvey into the fold and and had him be at that meeting with us, being very optimistic, there's a lot of opportunity for this community in the the not-so-distant future. So it 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 makes me feel feel really good when we start seeing the interest that we're seeing today. And I can assure the citizens of this community and this council that by making the choices to make the improvements to our transportation and our infrastructure with Highway 2, with Tower Road, with 104th, with 112, the new rec center, the on-ramp to Penya, those are major investments that no doubt in my mind will pay off a hundredfold for this community. And so I want to thank you all for your insight to move forward and set the stage for the opportunities for this community moving forward. And this meeting that myself and Jason had just go to show that people are taking notice of what's being done, and they're seeing that that window of opportunity is open today, and they want to take advantage of that open window before it closes. And that is direct tribute back to the staff and this city council, taking the steps to keep that window open longer so that this community can achieve the results that the residents deserve. That being said, there are no further business other than Mr. Douglas's hand every Monday night. Go ahead, Steve.
I received some information from Tom Healy. I sent out to council members, XO Energy is working with Nissan to extend a $10,000 discount to customers for purchasing a Nissan Leaf and plus additional $12,500 from state and federal tax credits. There's a short window of opportunity if our residents are interested in that. I'll pass this information on to our staff and see how we can get that going, so. It's a really big opportunity. Thank you.
I appreciate it. Won't benefit me much, my gun rack doesn't fit in a leaf, but with that being said, if there be no further business to come before this city council this evening, we are adjourned.